One notch up.
Okay.
So they can hear you in the back.
Microphone closer.
So as I was saying, going back to the background, we looked at the land, past land uses such as the map back there in the corner, the current 2040 comprehensive land use map. We also looked at the Macomb study, our current zoning district. And then what was actually really helpful for me was the lightning round responses that we got from the January 15th meeting. That I was able to look at and determine what would make sense with the other materials I just talked about to create these new zoning districts or proposed zoning districts and what uses should or could go in them. So that's kind of how we got to this point. So thank you for all the time, like I said, the last four or three meetings that we've done and thank you for the lightning round as well. As for the homework, Elizabeth and I actually today discussed what would be the best way to go about getting everybody's responses. And we kind of came up to this kind of set of rules because we want to try to make the goals that I just talked about. And this would probably be the best way. So if we all go to just document one, the common uses definitions, that's the first page or... Yeah, first page. The way that we're gonna go about this is I have labeled, depending on where you guys sat, I put you as one through eight. And Chris, next to me, you're number one. So what you're going to do is we're going to have everyone go around and describe if they had any changes to the retail definition, what those were, and the rest of us in the audience, we can jot down in the margins what the changes were. And at the end, so Chris, then Jeff, then Shelley, once we all hear everyone's different versions of if anything needed to be changed, we'll summarize, once we get back to Chris, or Dean or I, we'll summarize what we heard. And if we have to, we can come to a conclusion on what maybe a new definition for retail could be, or if there needs to be a different name, maybe retail isn't the right word for the use that we're all thinking of. And we'll create that. But it's entirely okay if you didn't have any comments or concerns. That means that I get a, as Elizabeth would say, a gold star. I did my job and everyone can be happy. But I highly suspect that won't be the case for a lot of these. So it's okay if you don't have a response, it's okay if you do have some concerns. Does that make sense for everybody? And then after that, we'll go to number two, which would be, starting with Jeff, he would explain if he had any concerns, comments, questions about professional office or, yeah, professional office. And then we'd jump to Shelley and just keep working around like that. And I think that's everything. I just wanted to let everyone know what we're doing today is really gonna help the rest of us, Elizabeth and Dean and I create, this will be like a blueprint, a guideline to help us create a more in-depth zoning ordinance. So a lot of this isn't set in stone. We might get all the way to the end to light industrial and decide we should go back to this first district and change something. And that, that's very common for what we're doing. So there's no worry about getting everything 100% right on this first go around. Yeah? Okay. If you'd like to start, if you have anything, and if you don't, that's...
And that would be on everything?
Just retail, just retail then.
Of the building? So 70 to 80% of the building with retail sales or showroom?
Okay.
And that's number three?
Oh, just on one.
So right now, what we're looking at is any comments made for number one, retail.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's right. And then when we come back to the end, we can then address the comments that were made, so we can discuss it out.
What were your numbers again?
Everything I've seen on the internet is like 70, 80%. And I don't know whether you want to address e-commerce at this point. I mean, is that excluding e-commerce?
Yeah, I have that down at number eight, yeah.
Okay, so I don't know if you have to be inclusive or even say that.
Is that all, Shelley? For now, okay. And then Jesse, do you have any comments on that? On retail specifically?
Everything is fine. Fine putting a number on the percent that has to be showroom. My question would be, is 70 or 80% a little bit high?
What we're talking about is, let's say, take Target, okay? The area that they store stuff in the back is usually, you know, 20, 30%. And the rest is, I don't know, I like the word showroom, but it's retail sales. So it's that versus, let's say, a place in Forest Lake that sells automotive parts. You've got a, I don't know if they call it city desk or what do they call it?
City desk, yeah.
Yeah, we have a city desk. And 80% of the space is used for storage in the back and you've got a very small showroom in the front.
You're thinking of an Eppa?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
I'm a little...
That's all I have.
The yellow one by the lundrman?
And just to clarify things, are we discuss, are we discuss everybody's comments or wait till the end?
We, yeah, we should wait till the end, so...
Okay.
That is...
Number one, I... I'm with it, I think it's good explanation.
Yeah.
I like the fact that you used consumer rather than customer. They make that distinction between wholesale, they call them customers, retail, they call them consumers because you go in there to buy what you will use. So I think that's good.
Uh, just one quick...
Clarification on any exterior displays. So if you have a gas station and they want a windshield washer for it without that.
That would be an exterior display, so... And in our current code right now, we do have, I don't think this would be the right solution, but we do have language addressing more than 72-hour outdoor displays of small retail sales. I don't know if our, do you know off the top of your head, Dean? If we have anything related to, specifically to allowing convenience outdoor storage and sales. Hyperfluid. That definitely could, it definitely can be addressed. You could do an accessory convenience.
And, you know, usually you're tied up to the building where you want it.
Cover all the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But it is allowed.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was thinking of, yeah.
That was my only, you know... Otherwise, I like it.
So I had the same comment as Shelley. I also wondered whether or not we wanted to define the loan high intensity because you've explored out a lot of the definitions.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So, and what I was thinking for the next part of this would be the general discussion, the summary. And what we have is the 70 to 80% of the area should be a retail area slash showroom, whatever verbiage we'd like to use for that, addressing the off-site, produce off-site that actually came up right before the meeting too. And then we can have it somewhere else in the code, but adding the, getting rid of the excluding any exterior displays and sales or having it somewhere else in the code that, or I think it does exist in the code that you can't, you can if you're a convenience-related sales, but it just can't cover more than 50% of the sidewalk. But we, so if there's, if there's anything that we'd like to discuss, we can try to rework the definition right now to add in, if we all agree that adding something like 70 to 80% of retail areas should be, should be added. And then finding a new language, instead of just saying products produced off-site, because what was brought up was bakery or take and bake pizza. That's a retail onsite, you purchase it there and then you take it home. Yeah, something like that. That doesn't quite fall into the restaurant or that kind of service, but rather it's actually retail. So we can discuss that right now, trying to find a terminology or some kind of language to bring that in. Yeah. And the loan high, heck, then it's, yeah, that was, I realized that when I was looking through there too. When I was looking at the initial definitions for loan high, a lot of it was focused on the space itself. And then that didn't seem right, so Elizabeth and I looked at what, we actually looked up the definition for intensity and it's adjective and a noun. And both of them pretty much relate to the magnitude of something or the standard of something. So when looking at, and this is jumping a little ahead, but when looking at the commercial C1 district, we say low intensity retail. What we really should be saying, or what I should have said, is the high intensity retail because that is your, it's seen the most, it's right on the freeway and you're going to have a lot of traffic, a higher intensity level of traffic. And we want a higher intensity standard for all these other things. So I don't know, we can, we can discuss if we should have that differentiated, a lower high intensity or if just if we have a good definition of what intensity means to us, we could put that into the definitions of the district later too. Yeah. Come through. Yep. So you would, and that would fall in line with, you have this, right next to the highway, it's high visible, you'd get a lot of traffic and that'd be the higher intensity retail sales. So if we have a good understanding of what we all think intensity is and just quickly looking it up just in the dictionary kind of matches that, we could use that in district definitions. We may not have to actually define it and put it as a use. But if we would feel more comfortable putting it as a use in one of these definitions, we could add that too. After discussion. Okay. Yeah, no, that also works too. As long as, and if we need to come back to these little notes that we've made when we're talking later down the line, then that's okay too. I just wanted to make sure that we would kind of remember this when we were talking about uses later on.
One other thing I'm handling later, Bill, is the end user thing that you talked about, that we sell from end users, how, you know, based on people, what we sell was. So where you say the consumer, the consumer may be a part of the end user.
Okay. Going back to what Jeff said, yeah. That's a good question. Dean, do you see, or do you have any thoughts on some of these proposed changes that may be glaring or generally we can discuss it later to that words?
Well, you hit on one, and that is what is the purpose of describing intensity? Are there two different, when you're defining retail, does that matter in the definition of retail? Or does it matter in the different types of retail you are promoting? So you may have in your... The highest intensity we always describe originally in ordinance to refer to interchange itself because of the amount of traffic and so forth. It didn't relate to the actual intensity of sales within a building. So it was more of a geographic and a descriptive reference for different types. I don't know that we get hung up on that, but all of the comments are helpful. I don't, I mean, my only real comment in the beginning while there were two, the exterior storage. We do have that in all convenience stores. So we have to be careful. I mean, and I have to agree how you want to define that. In a definition, I would just say including limited exterior displays for retail sales. Because that's what they are, that's how we limit it now, direct display. Window wash in the wintertime and fireplace. Salt or whatever the case is. Produced off-site, I don't, I just don't know why that has any bearing on it. It's in direct conflict with a bakery or a pharmacy. Because they are direct retail sales and they make them there. And if you want to prove, you have the same thing.
Yeah.
You're trying to encourage somebody producing something. On, on the retail percentages, I just think we have to embrace what it is you want to accomplish. I don't object that that becomes part of that. It is, the biggest problem I have is the auto parts. I think all of those auto parts, they just don't want out in your actual showroom because they're easy to put in your pocket or whatever the reason is. And they got paraled and shelved and there are so many of them, it's easier to find behind the counter. So I just want to be certain we define it so that we're not kicking out auto parts. And that may be totally different from making where, you know, the big difference is if none of those jackets or cones or whatever devices they're using for construction are ever purchased by a consumer, how does that, how is that different from walking in the auto parts store? And 90% of what you get is behind the counter. But if we define what's behind the counter as part of their storage area, is it, is it meeting the real description of retail? I think everything that's in those stores is retail. And so I, it's how you define where the counter is and what you might not have public access to. Might be different. Also want to be careful that we don't encourage storage in the retail area because we exclude the amount of storage in the back. So you go to Costco now and what do you have? You're afraid to walk in there sometimes because they got cases and cartons piled up way over you and you want that one item and you gotta wait 40 minutes to get it. Whereas if they had a big storage area in the back, it might not meet a 70 or 30% or however it's defined. Those are my only concern.
Okay.
I think we just have to talk through that. But this is, this is the way that you want it.
Yeah. And then like you just said, Janet, we can wordsmith it, bring it back. Yeah, okay. So then, unless anyone else has any comments, questions, we can move right on to Jeff then. Number two, professional office, if you had any. Yeah, to you, and then we'll jump over to Shelley.
The only thing I had was, and it says a building used as the place for business for recognized professionals. And I was gonna say for services rendered by professionals. To emphasize the fact that we're talking about services, not, you know, sale of goods.
Jesse?
Nothing.
Number two, when they gave examples such as doctors of medicine, dentistry practitioners, as an artist or a tattooist, somebody who tattooed people, is that an artist? Is that a... What, I mean, does that fall in this category here? But we got authors there. A barber be in there? A beautician? Those are services?
Services. Professional office. Yeah, no, and that kind of falls in line with what Jeff was asking.
So you're saying, are you saying whether it should say licensed professional? Is that where you're going?
I don't know if tattoo people have to be licensed.
Yeah, do you think you're limiting them? Okay, I'll, we can come around back to that.
Yeah. Discussion is still.
I think that you guys...
Okay.
So still should it say licensed professional?
Well, licensed can...
I'm just going for my particular trade. Some cities will make it be licensed, but I have my certification and my insurance. I'm insured and certified, but I practice in Columbus and Columbus doesn't require a license.
So I, that's my example, so if you say licensed.
That removes, yeah. And I think recognized, in my opinion, covers the licensed, the insured, the certified in some way. They are recognized professional rather than...
Can you, the word accredited, it covers everything?
But how do you cover it? Yeah, I think that's what you, I think that's what you're going for with that word. But I think that's not what you're driving for, is recognized.
Yeah, that...
Question I had, was there a reason to distinguish professional office from office? In other words, are there some officials that aren't professional?
Like a larger office space, but you could, it could mix into the same area, I guess. You could still have a professional office, a large accounting firm. But then also some districts, you'd have the smaller buildings, you'd have the smaller professions. I guess I was going along the same way, it'd be a service, but it would be an argument that a larger professional office would also have a service to its end user as well.
So are you distinguishing between service, between like your H&R Block, your accounting, that's a service and not a professional office?
No, I would, that's the professional office. And then I was, we were just talking about like, I was thinking between a larger office campus versus the smaller, you might just have one professional or a dentistry, might just be one smaller building. It's not this large campus, this large office. But you could put them under the same thing or you could just have a office area. I was just trying to create a definition that we could kind of envision when we looked at the use itself.
Where is insurance land, land? State Farm, Liberty Mutual, I mean, the ones you always see. Is that a service? Oh, yeah, and Dyna Realty, like what is all that land under? Is that a service or is that a professional office?
There's a fine line, I don't know. Yeah. I don't know about author, I've never seen that.
Yeah.
And I've never seen a minister in this category because they don't typically office in an office building.
That's true. A shared workspace? Yeah. Yeah. Instead of goods. Maybe something like your shared workspace, that might be more of a outlined use itself in its own right rather than having it fit somewhere in a definition. It could just fall under a shared workspace, office rather than having it, trying to fit it into some kind of definition. But, so the main ones that I'm hearing though is just maybe we remove some of these uses that might not like, it's author administered, they might not actually fall under what we're thinking the essence of this definition is. But otherwise, professional office, I think you bring up a good point. Do we want to differentiate between what we're thinking larger office areas, like a campus of Wells Fargo? Is that going to be a different kind of definition than what we're seeing here with this professional office? Uh, yeah, okay. It's its own use. Yeah. Maybe I was trying to get us over there. In the front. Limited retail goods in the, in the... Do you think that's something that we need to directly highlight right now? Yeah. Or maybe even remove that, yeah.
When you, when you take musicians out of there, it really crashes more on the service side or, you know, for a trade doctor, which is always considered a professional office. Not learning a trade, but...
Yeah.
Wouldn't associate them.
Okay. Oh, just another one to define.
I like Shelley's comment about services rented. I like Shelley's comment about services rendered. They wish what it is, if you're gonna use that term professional, absolutely everything.
No.
But you, you might want to group things, categories. Engineering, I don't, I don't know where you drop, but I would consider that other real estate are married to be included in. But smaller, more mobile groups will be in the smaller... Insurance.
It could go in there, yeah.
Larger storefront with their own sign, but a lot of insurance agents.
Kind of consolidate some of those groups, right? No, and that's what we're all thinking when we see professional office, so that would be, okay. Does anyone else have any more comments?
I was in a six-story building, and we were about the only service industry, awful lot of others, development, real estate. Financial.
Goes with accounting and...
In any event, I think, I think the grouping is... And limited.
Allow for some flexibility. All right. No. Then we'll move on to number three, Shelley, services offsite. Well, I guess the question might be, do we want to create a distinction between onsite and offsite services? I'll ask that to the group first, do we think that there is a merit to doing that? Okay, all right. All right, so then, yeah, we'll go forward with it then, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, sir.
Services offsite.
More zone dependent, really, is what it would come down to.
So this is just a definition, so how do you add that into that? With no big trucks?
What I'd say is you'd put it in, so if you don't want services offsite, it might come down to outlining the actual use, when we're looking at, say, the light industrial district, you could explicitly say the sales of new construction equipment.
That would be sales.
That would be sales, that's true. No, that's a good point.
So let's just throw it on the table, so Olson Sewer, so Olson Sewer Service, they have got big trucks. So, but all of their services are offsite. They don't, so...
Yeah. Okay.
But I mean, do you want to split at this point, or do you do it later, a heavy duty service versus a light duty? Like Olson's versus... Landscaper, please.
Just, sorry. It is, yeah, that's very similar, yeah.
What do you say, Dean?
Well, I, I... Not in, no, like, retail is a category that we would list as uses. Office might be one. On-site service and offsite is one method of describing those, but if, if you look at onsite service, I mean, there's an awful lot that you could add that don't have extensive vehicles and oil. Change business, don't have any overnight story. I don't know, it's just like a drive-through restaurant, that's typically what onsite service would include. This is what would include piercing and tattoos and all the other things that some might have anxiety over, but that's, that's the category. The offsite, I think what, what you're alluding to here is somebody that's got a... Because they're going out, they're not coming in, they're going out, they don't have any drive-up business. Those become a function of the different zones that you... We're not gonna have any offsite services. We just aren't. So I think there's further clarification for a general description. Does that description end up being put in the definitions in order, or is it, is it serving to help you distinguish all this right now? And later on, it's not even in the listed definition?
I guess what I'm saying is, is okay, let's use C2 for example, for services offsite. Do you want Olson's in there?
In the...
C2, yeah, right up here.
No, I, I, I wouldn't think you'd be talking about that.
We have offsite services, right? Consider, do they send out people that deliver?
I haven't even, I don't know, I don't know if we want to mix that one.
Yeah, yeah.
I was trying to give two examples in the same area that you would have the same definition, yet one we would accept, Viking, where they send trucks out with parts to different places, and Olson's, they're pink trucks, you know, and you want that in that area. You've already got Viking in there, do you want Olson's?
I don't see any connection between...
But they're offsite services. I'm just saying, if we allow offsite services in that area.
And I'm, I'm saying we're not, and I'm not convinced that Viking is in that description of offsite services. I know you're hung up on it, and I, I don't want to let it go, but our intention would not be to have Olson's in C1, C2 mixed use, and I don't think there's a resemblance to Viking.
Right now, like Dean said, it may be just something that we keep in the back of our mind, may not make it into the final cut. Okay, going forward, Ron, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, then, that's something to look into when we...
I just want to ask one more question.
Yeah.
So you got it in there, you've got sewer services in there. So, any place that you're gonna allow offsite, you will allow both catering services and sewer services in the same area?
If we allowed offsite services, say, in this B1 district, you could have a catering service up here and a sewer service, or a plumber, just a small, and you could almost say that it's a professional office, but with offsite, it's a small plumbing, or electrician even. And they're allowed to outstore their vehicle, their company vehicle in the back or in the front, and then, on the front, but in the back, and then they go offsite to their various clients. Where catering would be the very same situation.
I guess what I'm saying is, is catering, the trucks are people who, you know, some of the other things you're saying there, catering, delivery services, plumbing, electrician, you know...
All that sort of thing.
So, I, to answer your question, no. The definite, you might use the definition, and you might use the definition of services onsite in every single district. What's gonna be different is the use. You might have catering in the G2, and you might have sewer services in the highway commercial, but you're not gonna have those same uses in the same district, but you might use the same definition to describe what's allowed in each zoning district. As a definition.
Without overloading it with, yeah. Their instruments, it's a lot of... And, yeah, and I did like the way you just described it there, you, catering's offsite, plumbing's offsite, they're completely different uses that we see in different parts of our I-35 district.
So these definitions can fit into...
Varies, yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's a distinction I should have probably made, that we're not putting these in one zone.
Yeah, they're just definitions. Whenever you talk to somebody about Columbus and any of these, you can just, it doesn't have to do with what we're going to do now. This is just...
Landscaper. It'll be helpful, yeah, and it'll be helpful then, and it'll be helpful going forward in the next portion of this, describing the uses themselves.
Where do you fall? And once you know where you fall, and that we all have a understanding of the definition, then you go to the uses.
And that's worth, yeah. Yeah. We are, we can, we can coast through the next four of these, and then we can go right to the next part.
Number four, services onsite, any enterprise conducted for gain which primarily offers services to the general public, such as shoe repair, watch repair, barber shops, animal grooming, beauty parlors, and similar activities.
That includes small engine repair? Services onsite, yeah, and just to maybe call the conversation right away, we could definitely make a difference between indoor and outdoor too. You could say small engine repair in one district, but it has to be indoor, you have to keep it indoor, and there's no outdoor storage, but then you could also do a small engine repair, maybe, you know, further closer to the industrial districts, and you might be a little bit more relaxed about it. So we, I don't think we need to go into defining where the small engine repair happens, but I think that would definitely fall under that. Then, going back to what Dean said, actually, about the professional office, maybe there's something to be said, and I'm taking your spot, Ron, and I apologize, but maybe there could be something said about consolidating some of these uses too, so we're not making it long this, but, do you have any comments, Ron?
Oh, no, I think the tattoo shop.
Oh, no, it's going now. Barb, do you have anything?
I have one thing, Ben, and this is for everyone. What's primarily? Fifty-one percent, seventy percent? What does that mean? It's in definition four and definition five.
It's more than half, and not just one percent more than half.
Except when you're... I, I don't know that that word means anything in the service. What else are they doing? Think of any of these, what else are they doing that isn't service?
Where are you, in a restaurant?
Just services onsite.
Primarily offers, so then you say, does that mean primary business is shoe repair, but they are also allowed...
That's what I'm, and I'm thinking like barber shop, you have the product.
Yeah, exactly.
When you talk to attorneys, they'll say primarily, generally means more than half.
Exactly.
So, do you, do you want to define that, or do you want to say at the end, unlimited retail, with the retail sales?
Replace primary.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have somebody with an earring shop, they're gonna sell earrings, I mean, it's gotta include it, and that's a typical connection with a lot of services. But, we, we want to be careful that it's a service and not an auto dealership. So, we can have, we can have small engine repair, or we can have auto repair, but it isn't sale.
That's the service, that... Replace primarily. Okay.
Yep.
And I wrote that down. Who are we on? Ron, Bard, Pam, Janet?
Number five, Ron.
Yeah, I was last.
Oh, you were last, okay, I didn't, all right. Ron, restaurants, Ron.
Start with restaurants, I, I had no problem with it, except when Elizabeth brought up primarily, but Papa John's, is that a restaurant?
I think when we were talking about that, that was like a retail, more of a take and bake with you.
The health department would probably be in there. But, other than that, I have no issue. Five.
One style, and you eat, and they bring you a table, if you walk through, it's not a drive-through in there, but you walk through, you order your food, and they have a bar, everybody eats in there, people do take food out, but, do you know what it's, is anybody been in there?
I think they changed the name.
Kind of, well, it doesn't matter, it's the style. So, you know, yeah, they, they have multiple seating, but people do go in the bar, and they order their food, and they eat their food in there.
Yeah.
Eighty percent, ninety percent.
But you are, it's, it's also almost counter to go, they have the option to be counter to go.
You're always gonna wait for it. Stay.
And I think that might address Elizabeth's primarily question, because the definition says primarily engage in providing food services to patrons who order and serve after they're seated. The other part of that primarily would be the counter-serving, where you have a little bit of... bit of a mix of both, and we're not going to get into percentages, but there's, yeah, yeah. And that's what I was going to ask at the end, if we wanted.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because of Cracker Barrel, where they sell.
The little knickknacks in the front, yeah.
Or even, even some of the beer pubs sell t-shirts.
Yeah, they have their own merchandise.
So it's not, it's not just food services primarily, but you.
So that's an argument for retaining the word.
Or should we change it to Dean's style, just add at the end, along with limited retail sales? Or what?
What's your mark, Uncle?
Can I just add some one other thing? What, what do you call a pizza place like Carbone's that has, take, where you got caterers, people hauling food out? Or Domino's? They got drivers, two or three cars hauling out, is that catering? Or is that?
I would say.
That's fast food.
Fast food?
Yeah. And we can make that its own use too, it doesn't have to fall under restaurant. It can be, you have restaurant with accessory drive-through, you can fast food with. Is that you that were just on? You are next. Right, and if they're. I think, I would all consider that a restaurant, in my opinion, I guess, even thinking of places, I, that in my mind has always been a restaurant. And if they do have most of their. Or there's a delivery app that you can pick the food up, yeah.
You're on wheels. Not good tech space.
I like that. Now we have to, we have to define.
Yeah.
Here's my general question. Who cares? Why do you want all these labels for a restaurant?
We're trying to make Elizabeth's job easier.
So, we're not licensing them, where I would think, all the things you're talking about, I look at, an error I consider to sit down, but you have to go in and stand in line.
Before it's a counter.
I've never taken carryout there, I always eat there. What difference does that make? What do you, what do you care? The thing I would care about is if we were in liquor writing business. What do you care? You want all of the above. If you're going to distinguish them, I, then I have restaurants sit down, restaurants carryout delivery, restaurants, right? Where then you're defining what the difference is, and then when you have that defin, that definition, you may have a district where you think you want the drive-through, and in some other you might not. In other words, are medium-density housing, I don't see a drive-through restaurant. Ninety percent housing is what's supposed to occur there, you wouldn't want that, you wouldn't want an auto. Oh, yeah, well, but anyway, if you go to the trouble to define those, then what it, why are you worried about? Being first or whatever, what? I think we find so many different types of restaurants today, what do we call? Big difference is if they've got carryout and delivery, is that a problem for a zoning district? Or do they have a drive-up? Is that a problem? And the drive-ups are. They have stacking distance, you have to make sure the driveways are set back from intersections. But the rest of these, I don't know if it matters. So, when you get to the end, if you want to distinguish them, then I'd go whole service or sit down. Or if it implies you're going to have liquor, well, they are, they all do. That's the only way they make money. And you distinguish between the carryout and the delivery and then the drive-through, something like that.
Do we want to do that? Or do we want to kind of keep it as just?
All of the above.
Yeah, all of the above, and then the only really real distinguishment for the zoning planning perspective is the drive-through restaurant with accessory drive-through where we might have in certain districts, we might not. Restaurants, all of the above, and then distinguish between the drive-through and, okay?
Yeah, I agree.
Barbara, on you, hotel motel. I might just jump right to what Dean said, is, is there a real need to define hotel motel beyond what we already think of the definition?
Only if we're going to find Airbnb.
That's, lodging is where I was going to go, what do we consider short-term rental or lodging is what really should have been on there? So let's do that. Would rather replace hotel motel with short-term rental slash Airbnb?
I would just.
Okay. So we could just have hotel motel and then have short-term rentals and.
How are we even going to know?
We don't have any.
I think you want a supper, just thinking for bed and breakfast.
Not that I think we'll ever have one, but just.
Well, there was, there was an application for one on 189th, and we said we don't allow them. It was. And, and, but, but now, I mean, we get phone calls now. Do you, do you allow Airbnbs? Do you have short-term rentals? The bed and breakfast, I mean, now, it's very, way more prevalent today, especially when we had the Super Bowl and other things that were going on, and, and we didn't, we didn't regulate it, there was nothing in the code even addressing it. There just wasn't any regulations.
Well, and somebody could fix up one of the horses by the track. If you want to come and spend the week betting on the horses, it'd be cheaper to do an Airbnb than it would be to stay at the hotel. So that would be a tempting thing for somebody to. So it should be defined. Okay. Sorry, added to it.
Then I can add that on.
Yeah.
Do we allow that? I mean, I don't know. Do we have these home businesses?
They're renting a unit, typically the Airbnb. It's a room in their house and they're there. Bed and breakfast can be that way, but they're often, they rent all the units. And then they come and fix breakfast, or something to that. That's what Jess, Jesse's describing. If you don't regulate it, anybody is probably operating in Airbnb right now.
And I was going to say, sometimes it's not just within the home, you just have your accessory building be the unit that you rent out. Airbnb, you're just the name, a mother-in-law, law court, and that's, that's the room that they rent out.
Yeah, it can be.
Averification rental. Yeah, there's definitely, I'll, I add that on to number nine, which is, just will describe that, and I can bring that back to us, Airbnb and bed and breakfast. Does anyone else then have comments in general on hotel motel that they wanted to discuss? No? Okay. And then, Pam, we have general commercial, and this, this is another one, is, it's not necessarily a use to define, but it's just a definition, more, I guess it would fit actually better within a district rather than the use itself. So if anyone had any questions or comments on this, other than why is it here? Yeah, yeah. In there, yeah. In there. Yeah, and that's what I was thinking when I was rereading it. And the last one, going back to the question earlier, e-commerce with accessory storage of retail goods is how I brought a difference to retail and then the e-commerce retail. If we think that that, it should go in retail and e-commerce is just another subsidiary of retail, then we can do that, otherwise I did at the moment, break it out as its own definition. Where you have the Bear Home example, that's, they do have a little bit of a showroom, they do have retail goods on the premise, but as of right now, from my understanding, they are not retail sales directly from the site. And most of their work, their actual sales is online.
So you're seeing that could just be the bottom line of number one, right, and additional line to number one?
We could do that, or we could have it be its separate own definition as I have it right now.
What's the difference? Anybody?
I was adding eight to one.
Taking number one, adding another line. Another kind of retail is e-commerce with accessories.
Distribution centers, I was going to get to when we tackle light industrial and the other industrial. I was going to add warehouses, distribution, now, these are just for the first four, yeah. Otherwise, I mean, it's eight o'clock, which is actually a pretty good stopping point in the sheet, but we could go all the way to nine with that.
Well, it wasn't too painful.
Um, do we want to take a five-minute break or anything? You want to go right into it and all right? Did anyone have any final comments or questions? So the next place we're going is the PowerPoint specifically, this is the second page, so this is actually a pretty good description of where we're going to be looking at the. Thank you. I feel bad about just the upper corner staple now. It's going to be reworked, Pam, trust me, there are some things in here that are going to change immediately. Give it to you now. I'm glad. So, yeah, going into that, so what I have with this is, we're going to look at the definition and a little bit of the justification first, and we're going to do that for C1, MU1, MU2, and then general commercial. Then we're going to go back and turn to document four and look at the uses. So we're going to try to iron out, what are our goals? What is the definition? What is the purpose for the C1 district right here? And I already know in my opinion, it is not this. After looking at it again, there are some things like immediately like the low-intensity retail, I would change it to high intensity, because the way I view intensity is not different. So we'll rework the definitions, and then we will come back and look at the uses. So for the first person I have, for starting on, if they had comments or concerns, we're going to do the similar format, go around the table. Janet, you are going to be the first person. Yeah. Change it from low to high intensity, okay. We're going to, sorry, now we're working back this way.
My only thing on there is I have to define low intensity. That's it.
Barb? Outdoor display. Prominence, and I think this one I pulled from our current CR district definition, a little bit of that.
Oh, no.
Nothing here?
I tend to look at it from the Columbus branding, you know, perspective. I said, how much of this is really developable, you know? If we want to find it, fine, but I just thought, I don't know what we're going to put there.
Dean might be able to, not should be on Spotify, I think you were, I know it's not the exact district itself, but.
You know, it's funny, the, I did not, I might as well go see my district. I did, I did every other property in the district, I didn't do our, my density.
Yeah, I asked him earlier if he had time, because I didn't want to get into that, because it was a little bit of weeds, we're trying to just look at the uses, but it's not a good question, and it was bound to come up eventually, so it wasn't something.
All but one, all but one lot is you, all, all but one yacht, all but one lot is upland.
So there's, yeah.
I just want to, I just want to put, I want you to underline one thing.
Yeah.
I want you to underline provide space for. Because I think that sometimes when we're looking at, and I just want, because I know this is going to be a carryover. When someone comes to the counter, they usually tell me what their business is, okay? And then they say, that's what I want to be, but then when I ask them what they're going to use their building for, it's something that's very different. So I'll give you an example, so, e-commerce, what's their business? Retail sales. What's their building used for? Distribution and storage. And so I think this is sometimes where we get hung up, whereas what a businessperson who owns a business is calling their business is not what they're going to use the building for. And so I think if we can keep that different, because this is where we got hung up with horticultural services, because they had an office component, they had a, you know, a shop component, you know, but, but their, but the use of the property was going to be primarily outdoor storage of their vehicles. So I think if we start to think about, provide services for, what is, what, but really is, what, what is their, their space going to be used for?
On the site.
What are you, what are you doing on the site really determines what the use is? I, I wouldn't, it defines it right. It provides space for, not what your business is. What is your, what, what use are you actually doing in that space?
Finding space for high-intensity retail.
You know what I mean? Because, because e-commerce, you know, when you look at their homes, you know, he makes his most his money, he doesn't make his money on distribution and, and storage, he makes his money from retail sales. So he's going to say, my bread and butter is retail sales, but then you look at the building, you're like, nope, your storage and your warehouse. But he, if you ask him what his business is, he's going to say, no retail sales. So that, that's why, that's where, for, for, for Ben and I, sometimes it's hard, because what they're calling themselves, and then I'm like, well, you don't belong in that zoning district, but they're like, I'm retail sales.
Is that what happened with Mike?
Yeah, they insisted they were retail sales, that's, but that's what I am, I'm retail sales. And then, and then I think Shelley said, well, what's the use of your building? And you're like, she's like, no, you know what I mean, your warehouse, and they're like, but, but my bread and butter is retail sales. I, I sell to direct end users. So I think we have this problem, because what they define themselves as? So I think we have this problem, because what they define themselves as is one thing, and, and in order to provide that service or whatever they're doing, the use of their building might be something very different.
How do we make them understand?
That's a great question during the planning commission. Understand your business and stuff. Tell us what your, what will actually happen at your business, in your building, or on your site. Yeah. That's a great question to ask during planning.
So just something to think about while you're going through this. Okay, I'm done now, Ben.
That's a great thing, because I didn't think of it that way. Lots of cars. Servicing the cars.
Okay, but the other thing is, is that we assumed with Viking that it was going to be sales to end users, and then when they came in and explained their business, they said they had trucks going out to sites around the, you know, supplying things. And so that's off-site, whatever. You're not even talking about retail really at all.
A combo. I don't know how you wrestle them down to the real reason they're doing, or real business.
But they actually do a lot.
But I think that question usually, or that question just holds now.
In my planning mind, when somebody's sitting here, I'm gonna start to ask them more questions.
Questions, okay.
So I understand what your business is, now tell me what happens at your site. And then, okay, so you're, now you're telling me that you have six fans that leave every morning, you know?
So I think that's a great gateway question to really drill down, which we didn't do in Viking.
I have one thing, I was reading some other cities definitions with their commercial retail, and a lot of times I see corporate businesses listed in their definitions. I know we're concerned about that.
We can't discriminate against churches, government entities, most nonprofits. I don't know why anybody kid on that, but we have to be extremely careful. We have to be inclusive, in any church or. If the church, if you had a vacant commercial building, and this is happening in Forest Lake, and a church comes in with advisors. More so than government entities. So they wanna be careful about that, that term. It kills communities when schools, churches take over with retail. Because that's, that's a catch. And more discretion to. Keep schools out, but it gets, it gets political, you can well imagine. All the alternative schools that were involved in the last thirty years, or had retail sales. Places for kids to go, because it's the only place they could help them learn. So we gotta, and I defer that to your department, just keep it up.
Um, well, you know, every, every, every use or property has a, you know what I mean, a classification depending on what its use is, and in the state of Minnesota, there's sixty-five different classifications, so I don't even go there. I usually ask the tax assessor. If someone asks, what's the potential taxes on a given property, I usually ask them, because I don't, I don't, I don't know a whole lot about classifications. And, and then you have the land, and then they have the building and square footage and use, and they all have a different formula. So I usually ask the, the tax assessor, but what we are gonna be able to do, at least in the March meeting, one of our financial analysts, she's gonna put a model together. So once we get these definitions and the zoning districts together, she's gonna have, under certain assumptions, she's gonna be able to put this into a model, and then it's gonna show us by use what the potential taxes are going to be from certain zoning districts, so that we can actually move around and play with this model. Now, she'll take us through it the first time, and then the model will be ours, because that's, meaning Columbuses will buy it, you know, or, or she's making it for us, so it's ours. So we can, we will be able to use that as a tool for when we're doing planning.
Um, does anyone else have any comments? Ron, Jeff? Jesse, Ron? The second one, then, is. The mixed-use one, which is, at least the way I was interpreting it, it's very much, and again, we're gonna gloss over the small low intensity, that was a hiccup on Ben's part, and we're gonna turn that to high intensity retail. But it goes into the C1 district, is very similar to the C1 district, apart from the fact that it also has opportunities for the mixed-use residential buildings with the maximum density of thirty units per acre. And we are all very well aware of thinking critically about the northeast quad, just from past experiences and what we've thought about going on there. So if there's something you don't see in this definition that you'd like to have added, we can start right away with Pam and work our way counterclockwise again, if there's something we want to add to it or don't want to see. I think for those, it was similar to what we see in the C1 district right here, is we want to see, and, and that's, you're doing, you're getting into the weeds a little bit more, and that's what we're gonna try to iron out after getting just these generic uses is, well, and that's a good question, do you wanna see high design standards in the northeast quad area?
Yes, yes, I agree.
So when, when we say that, then we will define that later on, making sure that we do have an agreed-upon high design standard, and maybe it will change from what we currently have, the primarily brick and masonry, and it will go to something that might give a little bit more flexibility, but still have this, we might include different designs that we wanna see, like we saw with the apartment building, we saw the different levels, we saw different outcroppings, and we can add those in there. Yeah, yeah, you're all experts. So yeah, that we'll address later down the road for sure. Barb? Nothing? Yeah.
Should it specify low or small, low intensity retail?
I think that's, both of those will go to high intensity retail.
Oh, but when you say small, you mean the small size of the building or the property?
And I don't know if that should be in there. I don't think that, we'd have to get into the definition of what the small size of a building is, and that would also limit then the use, and any high intensity retail use could be larger or smaller, could take a whole up on here. That was one of the, it wasn't really getting rid of, but trying to create a kind of a barrier between where we would see more big box in the C2 of the general district, but just, I think keeping to the nature of the C1 district, which would roll into the mixed use, you still wouldn't see big box, so I thought that the size itself, small, wasn't necessary.
I eliminate small, change low to high, and if, tell me, if Costco came in here and said, well, we wanna take up all the rest of the property where Hy-Vee is, and now we gotta relocate your new street again, are any of you gonna turn them down? I'm guessing, and that, I wouldn't want you to have somebody else come in and say, no, that's not small, you can't allow them, and.
Right, and that's why, when I saw that, I was crossbowled though. So, does that answer your question, Jesse?
Yes. So cross off small and change low to high.
Yeah, yep.
It's in your comp plan, so that is the ceiling, that is the maximum. So that's likely what you're gonna get, that's what you did get. It's in a comp plan. We need to, we need to create the.
I'm gonna move on to mixed-use density two, and so with this one, it's, again, the low-impact service businesses. I, I question that use, 'cause what, what does that really mean? That would go back to defining the intensity of a service business, but in this district, you might see a few more services, but like Dean just alluded to, and I didn't put on here, in the comp plan, it outlines that roughly ninety percent of this area is better served as residential rather than a commercial or service retail area. And that I should and could add to the definition, or it's just something we keep in mind with the comp plan.
And I'll give you an idea of the acreage that I did look at on the north side of Lake Drive. It's about eleven and a half acres. Now, in that area, you've got some interspersed wetlands, it doesn't mean you've got a single site that's good to work with. The south is larger, it's about twenty-six acres net, and you've got some things, but that's perfect for medium density, where you might have eightplexes or three-story apartment buildings. Again, you're talking sixteen units an acre maximum. Everybody's gonna go for that product. Generally, you get a three-story building, you gotta have a, you gotta have an elevator, and so you might have two-story buildings where you bypass that, and then they all end up being more like eightplexes or twelveplexes. It's hard to say, but in there, you may have, if a number of units ultimately over time were built, they warrant higher service, where, you know, maybe somebody has a.
Buy all those eightplexes.
So I, I think your description is a good one. I noticed conspicuously, we ended up about seeing the same design standard.
That's a good, that's a good.
For any of you that had read my previous draft, where I went from low density to being high density and had the standard, this was in the middle, it wasn't our high standard, but if you thought for a minute, this is the time to establish this, and again, you've got a lot of acreage, and there's a variety of parcels. It's not like one site that we have over on each side, or one larger property to put probably one project. This could be a multitude of those, and this might, this might warrant, maybe not high design standards, but reasonable designs. I don't know how you term that, but I, I noticed that.
I'll try to find a way to.
Dean, I wasn't paying attention.
That happens to me a lot.
You said there's twenty-six acres.
On the south side.
Is that net, or is that total?
That's net.
After you take all.
I'm estimating, I didn't add up what the gross was, but I took each, I took each gross property and estimated what, what the net was based on the county's overlay, and if we get two years of dry weather, it's gonna increase, but as we saw in the city property, where the road was relocated, we, we lost a third of that two years ago. So these are just approximations, about twenty-six on the south side and eleven on the north. Of that on the north, it's Mulled Hill, and you know how complicated that was. Mary Ann's got one of the nicer parcels on the north side. And that also included those miscellaneous properties. There's three acres of miscellaneous that aren't likely to go, that have little sites, little homes.
Is that on the comp plan? This is.
No, not that. On the north side, you know, you got four homes up there, they're all little pencil lots, and they all want far more money than they're worth, and nobody's gonna buy them and redevelop them. What I would say is buildable, and the problem is, you know, you, you just, you may have a wetland, a rain center of the building site, and it may not meet requirements to it all depends on the quality of the wetland. And of course, on the north side, we had, and I tried to take that into consideration, and that Mulled Hill site, we had an extraordinary setback from not the edge of the visible water, but the edge of the wetland, they wanted a hundred-foot thick setback. What was negotiated on Mulled Hill, fifty feet?
Oh, seventy-five.
Seventy.
An average of seventy-five.
An average. And so that also takes into effect, unfortunately, the orphaned property. Even though you can see the edge of the visible water, that is, that is the same water basin, and they're trying to tell us they want a hundred-foot thick setback on that property. It would just kill that.
All right.
So there, this.
Yeah.
So that is considered the high watermark, the edge of the wetland, even though you're half a mile from, from the actual water. That kinda killed that other housing project, and you have to keep that in mind. In, in this one, again, you've got pockets of wetlands that affected or impacted Mulled Hill, otherwise, it's a straight line. You can see where that seventy-five foot setback needs to be, and again, the average is the key, we need to have some that are a little longer than others.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions about mixed-use two? All right, then the last one, we can get into the fun stuff, is C2, general commercial. I'll start with you, Barb, do you have any comments or questions? Ron?
Oh, me?
Okay, thank you. Correct. I'm gonna get out of the fun stuff right away.
We're on C2, right?
Correct.
I was just looking at that. Definition? Is this the one where it says, including office business campuses?
Correct.
And more extensive retail?
Correct.
What's the word, how do you define?
And that's, so that might be something that is less intense retail, you wouldn't have that high intensity, because we're a little bit further away from the high-intensity retail district here, you may have different opportunities for retail. Is there a better way to define that, Dean?
You know, in the old days, people said, well, intensive meant that it was indoor, and it was extensive, it was outdoor, extensive, applied, more visible outdoor. You, you didn't fill all the land up with buildings, it had accessories. Extensive, but that's old school.
No.
Learned it forty years ago, so I don't know that that's current, or if that's appropriate. I, that's a hard one, how you.
And I was thinking more like what Shelley was saying, where you'd see more big-box stores potentially, or where you'd see these other retail uses, and not just the really high, visible, right off the highway.
Travel centers.
Travel.
I mean, that's an extensive land use.
Yeah.
The property is maybe ninety percent built, but you've got a lot of parking, and you've got a lot of area for vehicle movement, things of that nature. With office showrooms, you've got more loading base, or you have more maneuvering areas. It's not an intensive, it's more extensive use of land.
Okay. That's a...
Travel center. They're all...
Yeah, absolutely.
Interchanges, that would be...
Holidays and many one, they have diesel fuel, they even have a shower. Very...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, compared to the larger... Yeah, yeah. Are we on you, Jesse?
Good.
Shelley?
Something should be added in there about entertainment.
I will add that in.
Oh, yeah, venue after entertainment?
Or add in entertainment somewhere in there.
That's on the...
Is there anyone at the travel center?
Vent center.
Well, it says down below.
I want a vent center anywhere.
No, 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 she's just looking for a bar.
Okay, no, good catch, thank you. Okay. Oh, okay. You could lump repair in with service, consolidate it? I'm thinking you, I'm thinking the oil change.
No, autos are not pampering.
No, no, but I think what was intended here, indoor automobile service, like oil changes, I mean, that's, that's where you want this, at the interchange. That's where, that's where they are gonna wanna go.
It's not where I want it.
Well, I understand, but I mean, I wouldn't...
I want it down here.
Yeah, they don't wanna go there. They wanna catch sixty thousand...
They got two right across the street from each other. Also, when I, when I saw indoor service, I was like, forget the repair, indoor service, but I want a like spa.
All's done, everything else done.
And that definitely is under the umbrella, but like Dean said, what I was thinking was, because this general commercial has a little bit more of an extensive service use, you could still put the spa in the, even the... Yeah. What are you gonna do when you get the oil change? Yeah.
I think you do make that distinction, but maybe you add, maybe if you keep that term we debated earlier, on-site services.
On-site services?
Because that's what you're talking about. That's missing, and that should be there.
Okay.
On-site service.
Oh, add that after indoor service, on-site service? Okay. And does that onsite service then, Dean, cover rapid oil or something like that?
I think you want it, I mean, in our community retail district now, we have always allowed indoor auto repair and service with no outsides. So it's not an overnight use. Somebody's got repair base, they gotta bring the vehicles in there overnight. You're gonna get an occasional delivery. Somebody had an accident at three in the morning, they tow it in there and sit overnight. But the intent is that it's clean, it looks like a restaurant.
With big baiters. Which some Russians are doing, are rubeles. Yes, yeah.
We have the garage pizza in my neighborhood.
Really?
Well, it's an old service station. Some do. And they open the doors in the summer, sit outside.
South Dakota, that was a pizza place, that was an old fire department.
Oh, yeah.
Fire, fire station, and it's all...
Realarm, Shelley.
The one, the one thing I forgot to mention on retail sales, in previous councils, they made a distinction between Lake Drive and the freeway district when it came to auto sales. And in, because retail sales, when you look at autos, and they said that they did not want any used car sales dealerships in the freeway district. So when you look at retail sales, the only exception was used car sales, and they were all on Lake Drive. And that's, and that's why you have all of the used car sales today on Lake Drive, and there are no used car dealerships in the freeway district. In your definition, you don't, I forgot to say, you don't, you don't make that exception. You didn't make that exception here. I just wanted to let you know, because if you don't do that, I get calls all the time for used car, used car dealerships.
We have them only accessory to new car sales.
I was just, and I knew the current ordinance was very specific, because they were very pointed on used cars.
It, it, it was pretty clear. It had to be accessory to, and that was the difference between permitted and conditional use. But yes, I mean, that, that distinction is one. I'm assuming you're not, that changed.
I think we will, once we get this, because that's, again, that has a mixed-use district, so we do have to look at that. I just know that that policy distinction has been for twenty, the twenty years I've been here, there's been no used car sales on, in the freeway district. Because someone will say it's retail sales. I don't think we have a prohibited use on...
Yeah, there's some legal questions.
Yeah.
He said that as accessory to new car sales.
We, yeah. Well, we write, write the terms so that you are clear about exceptions. We talk about retail sales in the current community retail district. That includes virtually everything except pawn shops. And then on Lake Drive, we allow pawn shop. We don't say anywhere in the ordinance that these don't allow six-parters, but we have an elaborate, twelve-page description in the ordinance. If you had one, it can only be on Lake Drive, or the requirement should be. We have, we cannot limit certain things like... Thank you.
Let me say this. I believe we all understand the need for maximizing taxable potential. And also, we don't want to have the entrance of the city looking like a used car lot. So do whatever you gotta do to follow through what we had, which has preceded it for the last twenty-five or thirty years. All right. And you on a phone booth with four acres of cars around it, being nothing. Well, see that it happens. However you gotta do it. All right? Well, I...
Jess is putting it better. All right, yeah, then, going forward. Is there any more comments on the general commercial C2 definition?
Do yourself better.
So now the fun part, at eight forty-two, do we wanna get into the uses?
They're right, we do our own one.
You do, okay.
The later it gets, the more agreeable everybody gets.
So to go about this, we can go about it a similar way, where we can continue down the line, have them all go through the uses anymore. They wanted to add any of that questions about... But I think it might just be easier to just start with one. And does anyone have any issues off the get-go? Any, any, any on here that you don't think should be on here? Or the community commercials?
Page thirteen, Jeff.
Yeah, sorry, page thirteen. It's a separate packet, sorry.
I have a question. I already have a gas station. Yes.
No. It's gonna be very, it's gonna be very uncustomary to have a facial... It's complicated. Routine uses, we do use those, and we did use those with... All plant, facial requirement, can one within, or based on which that was done there. In routine like that, it would almost... Have more than one bank. We'd get in trouble, you'd get sued, we could eliminate the competition.
Well, why wouldn't you have it if they...
If you get into Lake, or and you've got, you know, three gas stations, and all of a sudden, somebody goes out of business, and you're not getting back, or whatever. Like Grace says, look at Lionel Lakes. You've got two businesses that are kitty-corner, and I've been fighting it out for years. And I can't imagine that, you know, helping. One, at some point, somebody's gonna go out. I don't know what the one's called, but one's Bill Supere. You know, they're exactly the same business, you know. Small town that has hardly anything in it, you know, I mean, at least at that location. Right. So, I mean, the thing is, if you have, you already got high B, you know. It's holiday, it isn't holiday, is it?
Yes, yes, they are.
So it's like, so how, okay, so you have another company that comes, that doesn't want to have a gas station?
But Shelley, that's...
No, 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 I don't, I don't wanna give you the impression that you won't get more gas stations. I'm just saying, limiting certain uses for no reason. Way to go. I think we have, I think we have trouble.
How not eliminate competition?
But the, the, the competition is limited to serious things, and that's accessibility. So right now, on the west side, superior accessibility exists at the holiday site, because they were there. They got a left turn into this property, for heaven's sakes. So on the east side, you've got the potential, on the north side, you've got the potential. South side, they both have good accessibility. Would not wanna get into that, limiting competition. Do it by zoning, zoning district.
That's what I'm saying, within the same...
What I'm saying is, if you didn't, if you didn't want them in the high-density, you say no gas station in the high-density. But within the same color, we are not in the business of limiting...
Number of...
I think you're gonna have problems.
Right.
And with all due respect, that one Supere closed for, I don't know, three years, reopened. That's the American way. Whether it's the best and proper use, we've never interfered with that. And, you know, that kinda change happens all the time. I got a Sears store closed next to me and my neighbor. Who would've ever thought that? Could we limit how many?
Saw an article in the eighties saying how Walmart's not gonna be able to compete with Sears.
I didn't hear you, Ben.
I just, to his point, whoever thought Sears would close, I saw an old article talking about how Walmart, I think it was an ad from the eighties or seventies, saying Walmart, how is it gonna compete with Sears and Kmart, largest box stores at the time?
Sometimes it works the other way, because when you're marketing like food, when you have several fast foods, you know, people have a choice, and that's fine, you know?
That's why...
But it's not choice in gas, you know?
About the gas pricing, I mean, I, I was dumbfounded coming in here now. The gas is like two dollars and twenty-four cents, but quarter more where I live.
I know, but if you have that premium gas station together, they're all gonna be the same.
The ones in Lionel...
But they're all gonna be the same in that, in that whole thing. I'm saying that, you know?
The ones in Lionel are always the same.
Well, that's all right, you answered my question.
Yeah, I, I'd say no.
It can be your turn. It can be your turn.
I thought we started with me, but then I got confused.
We're starting with Janet, it's her turn.
After she's done, she says it's my turn.
Why didn't we start it? That's why I was such a good one, and make sure...
Then my other question.
I wanna ask your attorney about that. I don't, I don't know.
Well, we're slumming on. Well, can we do...
We allow it in other districts.
Can go down on Lake Drive, same with the sex places. Do somewhat the same.
Can we have a smoke shop?
Yeah.
So are you talking about all tobacco sales?
Or just vape-related sales?
I, I don't know that you can do tobacco sales, because Holiday and Running Eces. Both have tobacco sales.
They don't?
They do.
They do?
I don't know.
A little desk, I think.
Yeah.
And here, are you talking, like Dean was saying, what about like the tobacco shop, where it is just strictly tobacco, where you're gonna find... Who's the one on?
Vape shops are, what's, what's disparacable?
Some of them are tobacco shops.
Tobacco outlets. And that, I put that in there because there was a question of, what kind of bakery? Sarah Lee Factory, or are we going to...
Commercial tasting.
Although... I would say Elizabeth's new favorite word, primarily.
But does that really go next to the Holiday Station? I mean, we're talking about the red area.
Yeah, you're getting rid of, we're addressing that now, yeah.
We're gonna have bakeries in there, but I would say just define it.
So do we like primarily...
Yeah, but you might, if you don't put a number on it, you might as well say nothing. Right? From staff's point of view?
Well, I'm just looking at the area. I don't know, I don't know whether, I don't know whether you would really want Sarah Lee Bakeries here, because that's more, more distribution.
That's right.
Because it's the use of the building.
That's what Sarah Lee is gonna fix.
Yeah.
And then Jesse's asking, is, would that be good fix, having bakery with primarily retail sales to help avoid the Sarah Lee distribution scenario?
Seventy percent?
Yeah, do we need to put a percentage on it?
What are we, what is a Dunkin' Donuts? A bakery, or is it retail sales?
It's a coffee shop.
Oh, geez. But the use of the building is not primarily coffee, because when you walk in there, they're primarily donuts.
I'll turn that.
They got a retail...
Add that into this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will say, yep.
And the distilleries versus brewing? Some distilleries are awful. Some distilleries are awful.
That small one next to you, bro. So, is there a way to distinguish between those two? Because you could. Is that? I've never heard that. I don't know if that's the term, and that's the thing with breweries, I think they've been around so long that you could say, the brewery is in the industrial district. But the tavern or the brew pub is here. I don't know about distillery, maybe microdistillery, I can look into it. Yeah, and I know the one you're talking about on central.
Because the intent is like the tavern.
That is the intent, but Dean and I did have that discussion. And when we did, I was thinking the one on central, but then I also did think about, uh, the other ones in northeast that are in their larger industrial districts, and they take up a bunch of room, so.
So that was a, um. Child care, I, I, I took what I was curious about is, are you used to fear about, I don't know, like, do you think, well, really daycare?
Well, so basically they're.
They were meant for sort of emergency purposes, you know, like you're a doctor and you get called in to apply to do an appendectomy and you, you know, your wife is.
Yeah.
Grabbed your kid off while you.
Do the surgery.
They're like twenty-four seven, they're very usually expensive, but they're really meant to help parents that got, trying to, have their kids taken care of while they're working.
So like an hourly childcare center. You know, the other thing I thought about was, uh, people that are gambling and they need a place with their kid, you know, when they're walking in the motel room. You know, an hourly childcare center, um, they're addressing that at the, at the casino, but certainly that's available at other casinos. Yeah. It would be, but if they're not gonna provide that, someone might come in and say.
We used to have one.
I have never heard.
Just rent a room.
But I'm the only one that's saying.
Put the doctor's kids off when they're both, or their pets too.
Most of it in Las Vegas.
I'll see them.
Are more extensive than.
Commercial.
Yeah.
They have to be licensed. First, dentures, daycare.
No.
But we want a commercial daycare.
Yeah, and that's.
These have a kids.
Which is a very common and important, especially that on office.
Commercial, any of the pre-K. Care, and that's, I think, what I was trying to cover under licensed childcare and.
I agree with you, Jeff. Why not?
You wanna put?
They draw other businesses.
There are offices that draw other businesses too.
Often the banks that provide office space for other incubating businesses in your community. The overbuilding.
So I guess what I was thinking. We've been talking for so long, and those four corners, we should be marketing, we should be thinking about businesses that I think through the traffic on thirty-five percent, so customers are, things.
Are people really going to the traffic?
Yep, so, so, so my cat is, maybe those should, those should be really what we're, what we're planning for. And, and there's nothing wrong with things, but, you know, the people that are, that's the part that are going back and forth.
Where do you start to see financial institutions? In any of these districts?
Yeah, further away.
Further away from that interchange.
She got one shot at this one. So, so I'm just thinking we should really maximize, and again, I'm giving almost credit to Shelley for her for this one, and. Really maximize.
It's gonna be a big footprint too, in an area where we're trying, I thought, to be somewhat of a destination, whether you're going north, whether you're going to the hotel. And an ATM is just as good as a bank for the people that are going to the hotel, I assume. You know, I look at the sort of downtown, I don't even know what downtown might know is, you know, that four corners and everything, and, you know, they got that big bank sitting there and that one poor little lot on the corner, never gets sold for anything, because there's nothing to come to except the tavern and then two places that are identical and then the bank.
But it's probably not sold, because they're asking too high of a price.
Well, it may be, but it also is, you know, you sell land, because people around you have like services and people stop in that area.
There's a whole heck of a lot of traffic that goes to there.
Yeah, there's two of them, or three of them.
But it isn't, but, but down there, it's not so devastating, because they got a lot of space and there's a lot of people that put a lot of stuff around it. I don't, you know, at that point, I don't care, but our little corner, we don't have a whole heck of a lot.
Lot of space. Look at that little subway in there.
So maybe that's a good question for, for, I mean, it's not that there's anything wrong with somebody, but if you're really trying to market towards what's gonna be attracted to the, you know, travelers, then somebody's not really making sense. And you kind of don't, you don't wanna give them priority, or you don't wanna give them, you know.
Yeah, I.
I suppose, I suppose, I, I agree with you that you're looking for there, but I, what I'm looking at is, we're building a brand new hotel. So if I'm in a hotel, what am I gonna, what am I gonna need and use? Cause I'm either a highway user, I'm visiting, but I happen to be staying there. So when I looked at this, I'm like, am I traveling with my pet? Am I gonna use the doggy, you know, dog grooming pet clinic? You know, am I gonna use that? When I, you know, when I'm in a hotel, I want my fingernails done, I want my toenails done.
I want stuff for the liquor store, have pizza for the kids.
I mean, so to me, it's like that.
We, we had the exact same conversation with a brand new hotel. And we really tried to, um, accommodate.
And they fit a brand that we're trying to go to, you know, a bank is not gonna do that. We don't have a downtown. We have something to sell, which is maybe up going up north, maybe going to the hotel, getting away from the twin cities, being, you know, normal. And when you put a bank in the middle of it, when you have very little space, I think that's a kind of a bad.
Well, let me ask Elizabeth and the other guys, professionals. So the bank, one bank I go to, used to be at, down by the lake there, right in Porce Lake. Lake Area Bank. But then they put in the roundabout and just destroyed the traffic flow down there. So they let their lease expire and they moved up onto Broadway. So if you're going into town from here, take a right, there's one bank right on the corner. And there's another stoplight in the little street. And Lake Area Bank has rented a piece of that building. So there's a, a land title or a, some kind of building like that, or office there. Next door in a cubby hole about this big is Lake Area Bank. So it's two old ladies sitting by the cash machine. That's the bank now. It's not like Chase Manhattan or anything.
Well, look at Premier Bank or in the U-ville, they're attached to the.
Gas station, the S.A.
Yeah.
It wedged in between the.
It's the same.
So I'm not, I agree with, I can accept your argument. But if you don't allow that, would you be excluding something as simple as that? Which wouldn't hurt anything?
It's not that it won't hurt anything, but it's, isn't the best use of that property, is what you're saying, right? Right, and I think that, you know, if you absolutely have the money. I don't, I don't know why anybody would wanna go to a bank in that area. Why would you want that?
On your way home from the track, you're swinging with all your pennies.
How many, okay, how many cash people are really, I mean, people are doing online banking and they're doing, you know, I mean, I would go even to get a mortgage, maybe, or.
Banks are going up all over.
My banks are not gonna have. I mean, does it have ATM machines? You know, they said there's not enough. A quick trip, I get gas, I get gas. You know, like.
I, I think. I think typically.
They don't charge me a fee at the quick trip.
The bank is a fabric of a community. I mean, that's my concept of branding, I understand exactly where you're coming from, you've got limited resources. Need it to be taken up by that, but I think when people invest in a community, the family restaurants, the banks, I hate to say it, but sometimes the gas stations are where. Where people go. I can't go to my bank Friday noon. It is so busy. Free Friday. And that's, there's six banks at Ridgedale. And that is downtown, I hate to say it, but. And you can't go there Friday noon. Whatever, the relationship of offices. Retail.
No, the, I go to a credit union on Saturday, um, and that's the one day that I can, cause hours are just coming. And Saturday's packed, there's lines all day and they're only open. Yeah. Good point, construction firms, which we do see a lot in that corner.
I've got a question, do we have banks over in, uh, mixed use one? Northeast quadrant?
Financial institutions.
Yeah? Okay, well then I give up. They can drive across the freeway.
If you had, if you had an apartment building there and you had a, a small bank, I don't think that's a problem. I really hate to see one, though. Drive through and block space and, you know.
And another reason I'll give in is, because that's more visible by the freeway, first of all. It's higher land, isn't it, than down here? You would see that easier. And also remember, you could take a pencil and draw all of these lots in the commercial, community commercial. North to south, draw a line down the middle, because practically a half of them are unusable.
Hey, who are we, who are we saying are gonna use these banks? Are you saying that the lovers are gonna use these banks?
No. Anybody?
Yeah, banks.
So, oh no, okay, who's using?
And you're leaving it, I don't wanna jump the next page, but you're leaving it in the mixed use.
Yes.
But not in the.
Well, yes, we are not in there, and I don't like them when the mixed use is in there.
You don't like them in either location, okay. I have one question, in our catchall, and this is in the current ordinance, number four, our retail sales and storage.
Yeah.
This is the grand retail category. Is it necessary to have small grocery store sales in addition to that? Why would you even say small? What if a big grocery came? Taken? But we've already got grocery sales, we got liquor stores, we got.
Page thirteen.
All of that in our indoor sales, do we need small grocery sales?
In my opinion, no, because.
You would allow it.
You could do a small co-op and you could do a large.
Yeah, but you're, okay, so you're saying, you really threw me out and went into like love land about five minutes, when you said, you know, if Costco came in and said, you know, we wanna move in here with anybody, you know? And I have to think about that, because the thing is, I don't know that Costco is the, the thing that's gonna work out in the future, and you put all your eggs in one basket, cause that's not gonna hold any more than a Costco and, and maybe Hy-Vee. And I'm thinking, if we wanna be destination and everything, are we gonna just be a Costco destination? Or are we gonna be a destination for people to go up north and get stuff? And how is Costco gonna work out with Hy-Vee, with, with the, the track? You know? Then there's no room for, you know, uh, the drugstores or the whatever, you know, beauty powers or the massage, whatever, you know, wellness centers and that sort of thing. I guess that, I don't know. All I'm saying is.
It doesn't matter, cause we already know. Small grocery store here, and you got groceries here.
But he's saying, if, if a large grocery store said they wanted to go in there, which I don't know why you'd do that to Hy-Vee, but, you know, if you want a large grocery store, wouldn't you let it do it? And, and that's why you're putting small grocery store. And that's really Hy-Vee.
Well, your, your, your retail.
Yeah, you're saying you're allowing Hy-Vee in there.
Your, your retail specialist says you're not gonna give it one. I, but I'm only making the comparison that number four is your catchall, you're allowing all of these things. Why are you highlighting small grocery stores?
Just redone.
Just mix it.
Yeah, it goes into, it's the same category.
And I wasn't saying you would prefer Costco over that, I'm just saying, in this world, when you own the property, you'd like to sell it. Something like Costco came in, bang. One site plan review, it's done. Is it practical on that site now? No. You got the utilities running down the middle, but at one time, we evaluated for that and it was. You could still qualify for a destination business, cause this site does have the traffic to support it.
Okay, and where do drug stores fit in here?
Is that convenience related?
I think in another district, it's actually called out, so is its own drugstore? If that's something we wanna put in here, we, is that a comment that you had to add it in there?
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay.
They also check on auto supply and.
For commercial C one?
Indoor sales.
Then, then this.
I was feeling the pressure from Jeff to just shut up and move on, so.
No, no, but this, this is, I think, important clarification, because what you're, I, I think what you're talking about, if, if, if this is based upon the, uh, the limited nature and the location, whether it's. C one on the left side or the high density on the east side, then you are talking about low intensity or. Then you are talking small. You'd allow a small bank, but not a large bank. I, I, I'm trying to get where you're coming from and understand that, because.
Oh, what worries me too is you said high intensity, low intensity, you just based it on traffic? I, I'm thinking that in U one is gonna be high traffic, right? Or are you not talking about?
I, I'm still using high intensity as being, you know, packed and this, like jam full and extensive uses tend to have more elbow room.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not customers that are jam packed, it's the building.
And so if, if, if clearly your concepts and part of the whole discussion about branding, those two kitty corner locations are not for large grocery stores, are not, or. I mean, are you comfortable with, uh, CVS and Walgreens, are they too big?
The drugstore that you're talking about.
So then, this, this, we might wanna break up and clarify.
And, so that's what I was gonna get at, indoor sales and storage of retail goods are no longer than can hold wait throughout the rest of the ordinance, cause we, we do have to break some of these.
Okay. No, that helps me, and when I saw the term small, as, I figured it came from one of you here in that discussion, and that is a reflection, I mean, it, Kim Combs said, you're not gonna get a big store. It's gonna be convenience. And now, this concept for Hy-Vee may solve that, we don't know. Or another, uh, holiday type, you know, convenience store with a little larger, it may satisfy not only the highway user, but the density of housing that you have here. So everything is on that, small scale, and that helps, that, that's great. Clean up big.
Yeah.
And no banks.
No big banks, just.
And then what with, you, you want a parallel district with the.
Just one. Same thing you want?
I mean, obviously, we've gotta have the housing component, but that was a starting point. Which ones did you mix?
Same ones. Did you mix indoor commercial recreation for community?
I know you've talked about wellness and other things, but the biggest hogs of land are fitness centers. I'd take them out of these two districts and make them be next to that. I mean, they're the worst parking hogs of any.
Put them in C one, or?
I can't remember the one, two, three versus general.
Yeah.
Yeah, I put them in the, the ones next to that. Yeah, I put them in the, the ones next to that. I know this was debated and it came up at your work session. Do you, do you want to take off your small amount of land at these quadrants with indoor commercial recreation? You already did, all right.
On the commercial.
And they don't have to be big, but they can be.
Well, indoor commercials, that's kind of the movie theaters and things like, you know, like I had this at under sixty.
Arcade shooting.
Archives, you know, Chuck E. Cheese.
Olive Alley.
Yeah.
But you could have somebody come in here and want it to be.
Right. Archery range.
So leave movie theaters indoor, okay.
But why wouldn't that be fine in MU1?
The size of the area, that's what.
Well, we don't care if Fonzie buy the land.
Because they don't have the hotel over there. What I was saying is that was okay because I complained that you were entertaining.
Yeah, but so what? They can hop in their car and drive across the bridge, go to the rifle range and spend three hours shooting. The guy builds a building, we get our taxes, we don't care.
Complimentary entertainment.
Right. But also, we have a nice walkway across that bridge, we're going to be panned with snowfall. They could walk right across there with their bow and arrow, go over and shoot, shoot, shoot.
I guess if, if, if.
Everyone passing out of the honor.
Because I'm thinking on the, on this side of the highway, you're going to be more of the people coming from up going north or whatever. It's more temporary, whereas on the left side, on the, on the west side, it's more, I'm going to stay at the hotel, I'm going to, you know, spend some time, you know, and that sort of thing.
Does anyone else have any other comments regarding either C1 and mixed use one right now? Haven't already discussed? And they are, was the initial intent? But there are still some things that are, yes, we're both on C1 and MU1, they're kind of. On MU1.
I was wondering on this area about, I don't know how, what word do you use, but confection shop, something that sells candy, ice cream, you know, that sort of thing that might be.
Um, mixed use one.
Yeah, in and out. I kind of put it by boutique, but I'm not really fitting there on the fair shop.
You think about like Danielle's in Florida, that would be perfect place, like you have a little, you know.
You could do, we could just eliminate gift shop and call it boutique and I think the, the spirit of a boutique is, it's a small.
Boutique makes me think of shift store rather than food.
But I think the definition of it is a very specific thing. That's what boutique definition is, so a confectioner's or a candy shop is a very specific thing. So we could just eliminate gift shop and call it boutique retailer boutique shops or something, or just keep it at boutique. Or just, yeah.
Why wouldn't you just add confections to the door sale?
Is candy, ice cream, things that people can go in and mess on the season.
Frozen yogurt and all that type of thing.
I, you know.
Yogurt itself.
Think about the yogurt shop, oh no, 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 don't do that, you know.
You teach too many of them.
Be all season, you know.
Yeah, but that's, for that includes. There's cupcake, there's cupcake shops now, there's the frozen yogurt places, there's all sorts of.
In the old days, you just.
Convention places like that. Is that a bakery or is that a confection shop?
Right.
Is that, I mean, they, they sell t-shirts, cupcakes, you know?
I'm trying to get it down. Get on the condition, get the, the ice cream in the summer or you get.
Yeah. What would you call that?
How do you pronounce, how do you spell it?
Crazy successful place.
Yeah.
And you can get everything.
What was that? Oh, yeah.
What, 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 any comments on that?
On C1 or MU1?
MU1.
MU1, did you get theater there?
We have theater in there, do we want to keep theater?
Well, I just wondered, Dean, doesn't theaters take up a lot of parking spaces?
They're big.
I crossed it off.
All right, remove it.
What, you crossed that off?
Yeah, I crossed it off. I also, I don't, I didn't hear about the license deal.
I think you want to keep.
We kept it.
What are you going to have left there?
They don't have to be big.
And they can be more commercial hourly, like you said, it covers an umbrella.
It is an umbrella, but if you end up getting a lot of daytime employment, I'm kind of surprised there isn't one associated even with the district. Yeah, maybe there is somewhere. That's, that's pretty big use. Not going to distinguish between daytime and twenty-four hour.
No. It could already, like you were saying, go, it could cover all the way up to pre-c.
The other thing I, I want to mention is to MU1 down by Priner Preserve.
Yeah.
We did talk about the fact that that might be a place for like, no, urgent care, but we also have a fitness center. They, they're land hogs, but that might be a place where we put one, you know. So I don't know. We just took out fitness center because I didn't like it in MU1 up in the northeast quadrant, but we still have to think about that Priner area.
See, when you look at the Priner Preserve, do you keep that little area kind of off to the west that's not going to.
So, yep.
So that's where you put anything like that, right? It's not going to have help.
Not scheduled to. It could have, it could have an apartment, it could have offices.
But on the, but on the east side.
North side, yep.
But if we just knocked out some of the things, because we were talking about MU1 up north, and we knocked out things that you.
An office campus would be nice there. Yeah, the nice three-story.
Did we cross that off?
But is there an argument? And that's the thing, we do have two different areas is an argument.
Well, you still have professional office. Or did you give her?
I just did the.
You left professional offices?
Professional offices is still there. I mean.
So that could follow.
That would be allowed.
And movie theater you got rid of, correct?
Do we want to get?
Those twenty-four hour things, fitaholic?
Fitaholic or something.
I think they're going to. Yeah, isn't that the room with, with the blue carpet or something?
At that point though, it's kind of hard to tell what's going to come in. I don't know if there's a really good way to differentiate between.
Keep in mind, when this is done and somebody comes in and it is.
Yeah.
The small fitness that you really want, just amend your ordinance, it's not a big deal. But if you're concerned that you had a large user that generated more traffic and part of our problem, and I, I will bring this up tonight, but I, I do want to eventually get to talking about all conditional uses so that we have control when we're used as done a building, so that some central part of a nice little strip center, boom, it's a fitness center. When you have already time slots, you need double the parking for the maximum number of people that are in. And they never fit. Got one by my house and I've done, you know, all the other businesses, we're going to throw you away. No yoga parking here. And the city comes by and tags them when they're out on the street. We need to be careful. I just take it off now and what comes in. Part of a proposal to reconsider at that time.
I want to bring back, are we considering movie theaters at all in the C1? Or that is also next thing like we are in the MU1? See, yeah. Yeah, two theaters in there.
So you took it out of mixed use one, correct?
Correct.
But you left it in C.
Left it in C1. And I will, with these comments, I will definitely type up another one and distribute it and we can have like a, at the next meeting, we can do a refresher and if anyone's thought of something new, not spend too much time, but if anyone's thought of something new or another comment, we can address it then.
Is it, oh, I wanted to ask about the number nine restaurant with accessory drive-through.
On which, on which one?
Restaurant with accessory drive-through, um, you want ones that are just drive-through?
Like just the shack where it is the.
Like Caribou Coffee's, you know.
Would that be a restaurant?
No, that's why I'm saying it wouldn't fit in this, it's, it's just a drive-through.
What he's saying, is that still considered a restaurant?
A retail.
It's going to fall under number eight cafe.
Yeah.
Well, you said restaurant was sit-down and I assume cafe was.
I can separate cafe.
Restaurant with accessory drive-through.
I can remove restaurant slash cafe and make cafe its own years. Yeah. No. I, I was familiar with, in Madison and La Crosse have their own local chain that it was, all it was, was the shack and it's just asphalt around it, you pull up, hop and go. I didn't know, care if it was doing it, but I'm familiar with the concept. So I do think, like Pam was saying, unless you disagree or you can see another way to phrase it, I think cafe would cover that maybe, maybe cafe with drive-through.
I think anytime you're implying a drive-through, you need to say it. And so the way you have this now, you would not be permitting a drive-through the way I see it. Now the question, if something like Hy-Vee has no inside seating, but it is a drive-through for that, and then they have a drive-through for other uses, does that, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that layout in that building.
The drive-through is for coffee.
Not strictly.
I think the drive-through is just for coffee.
I guess I'm just saying the MU district, I don't even know, I don't know what this, now that it's, we throw all the cards in there, we're not sure we're going there with the Hy-Vee, um, this Caribou cabin idea, you know, again, you're going up the driveway and you decide you need the extra coffee going north or whatever, and you go, and you just go around the circle, which takes some space and you don't have a huge building. Do you want that in there or not?
Hy-Vee up as Starbucks right attached to?
They do. But it's not the same thing because is there, is you going north on, you know, going north and you just drive around the thing.
Oh yeah, you'd have to get off, loop all the way around, gotcha, gotcha.
Well, I'd say forget it, if it's a little teeny building with no taxes. Yeah, but they can go to.
Can we use for anything else?
Well, like some of those ones, places with all the wetlands and everything, it might be something that people come up.
And coffee shop slash coffee truck, coffee shop. With accessory drive.
We can try to figure out a way, yeah. We can try to figure out a way, yeah, to make it work, should it. We'll make a way to make it.
They want to call, they want to order on their phone. There are, there are new businesses too, and I don't have a big mind going to that because there's no businesses where they cook the food and then they send it out and you don't go in and get anything, you know. Send them out and that's what.
Well, we still have a couple more to go, so let's move along.
I, I think we got a nice, yeah, we'll get it the next time.
So how are you feeling about that, Ben?
I feel pretty good about that. How does everyone else feel, how that went? Did we like the format? The question I was going to ask before we all leave then is, um, what do we want to do for the next two meetings? So we had thought about a meeting again, and I've alluded to this in the letter, meeting again on the nineteenth for another joint funding commission meeting and then another one on the twenty-sixth. This one will be a three-hour meeting, starting at six?
Yes, that was, that's what's on the table, should we start at six?
That's, that's, yeah, so that's a question, should we begin this discussion at six? And then what do we want to discuss? Do we want to discuss, obviously, finishing the last two districts and then what other districts do we want to discuss?
Okay, so what theater we talking about?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, there's a fall festival meeting at five.
Elizabeth, we had discussed this afternoon, you and I and Janet, that we wanted to talk about, what was it? I1 and I2s. That's the dark purple?
The way I initially had broken it up was talking about the highway commercial and commercial business on the twenty-sixth, the longer, or the nineteenth, the longer meeting because in my opinion, that's, there's a lot to unpack there. I don't want to steal Dean's terminology, but it, uh, B1 is kind of sloppy. It has a lot of different service uses, a lot of different commercial uses and it's, bring it up right here, it, it, they're both very, it's, we're, it's, it's a hard use to kind of define, especially considering what's existing there and the potential that is already there. So I figured that would be a little bit of a longer conversation than industrial one and two where a lot of it's going to stay the same, there's definitely going to be some changes and some core differences between one and two, but I assumed that was going to be a little bit of a shorter conversation, I guess, but if we feel differently, we can. Addressing that.
Okay, so the nineteenth is at six o'clock with a joint meeting, is that correct?
The question was, is six o'clock okay for everybody?
What are we talking about fixing?
Right now, light industrial will let them have outdoor storage of big stockpiles of crap everywhere without any enclosure. We don't want that. How did that happen? We did protect them. No, like the text amendment was one thing where they said, we're going to define light industrial to include asphaltized and concrete production. We don't want to have a concrete that does that. And then the second thing they did is they took out of the ordinance, you had to keep your stockpile materials. Yeah, so now, so now, so now anybody can do that.
So is the grandfather in, but?
And that's why we have the technical plan now in I2, we would allow that, there's more of a place that we would allow. So if we don't fix that, we have to, we have to risk that.
Stick previous comment.
I know what your voting record was, Jeff.
So then maybe for the second meeting, first question, just six words.
Yes.
And then.
Maybe the I's won't take very long.
I would say, and because the I's may not take very long and we're addressing some pretty specific issues, we can finish up what we left off earlier, which would just be MU2 and general commercial, jump right into the I's and if we have anything left over, we can then lead that into the twenty-sixth, which is the other.
I will be here the nineteenth.
You're out of time, twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, so I will find out where we leave off on the nineteenth.
And I'll be calling you every day.
We have a workshop on the twenty-sixth from four to six? And then we, starting, when we, is that, it is that workshop?
That workshop.
Oh, it is that workshop.